Good evening, or good afternoon. I'd like to call to all of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners work session for May the 6th, 2013. For everybody in the room, please, if you have a mobile device, please make sure it's on silent or vibrate. So as much as you love your ringtone, we don't want it going off in the middle of the meeting. So if you could double check your phones right now, that would be most appreciated. Commissioners, there are some changes to the agenda. 3.3, we are going to postpone until the regular meeting. And we have a request on 4.7 to suspend the rules tonight. We will talk about that when we get to that item. So at this time, I would accept a motion that we approve the work session agenda with the change of moving 3.3 to the regular meeting.
Don't move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First up is our discussion actions, which, discussion items that would require no action on our part tonight or at our regular meeting. And we're gonna start with updates on the QSCB. We're gonna do the airport first? It was here. Okay, I'm sorry. Hang on, hang on guys. Okay, I'm sorry. Hang on a second. You'll have, see, my apologies. We're gonna go to 4.2 first, which is Ron Carley is here from Charlotte, the Charlotte City Manager, actually Ron Kimball is here, the Deputy City Manager from the city of We've had numerous discussions about the Charlotte Regional Airport Authority, and we've had a lot of questions that none of us could really answer. And so we asked Ron if he could come and talk to us a little bit about the city of Charlotte's perspective, I guess.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board of County Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you today. My name is Ron Kimball, and I'm Deputy City Manager for the city of Charlotte, Ron Carley. We call him Ron C., and I'm Ron K. Ron C. tonight is presenting the budget for the city of Charlotte, sends his regrets, and asks that I come in his presence and instead to address you tonight about the issue of the Charlotte Douglas International Airport and the move for, from the State General Assembly to create an airport authority. It's opportunistic, I guess, that I'm here because the Charlotte Douglas Airport is in my work group as part of city government operations. And so I'd like to spend a little bit of time giving you background. You've asked that I come and present and answer questions. I would invite questions throughout the short presentation that I have, and want to make sure that you get out of this what you'd like in terms of questions and answers. Thought maybe starting off with the history of the Charlotte Douglas Airport would be a good idea, because prior to 1935, the Charlotte's Airport was an airfield off of Wilkinson and Freedom Drive. And that was the predecessor and the precursor to Charlotte Airport, which was established in 1935 at its current location on the west side of Charlotte Mecklenburg County. It was built in 1935 at that location with Works Progress Administration funds and with $50,000 at that time, which was a lot of money, in city dollars that came from general monies, general property tax dollars. From 1935 to 1954, it operated out of those facilities, but in 1954, the airport had a new terminal building built. The records are unclear about exactly how much money and where those monies came from, but back in those days, it was mostly general fund dollars that were used to build the Charlotte Douglas Airport. It became known then as Douglas Municipal Airport. The current terminal building, which has been expanded recently, but it opened in 1982, and it was funded with $50 million of general obligation bonds. But the general obligation bonds were not paid with general dollars, they were paid with revenue bond, revenue from operations of the airport. So even though they were general obligation bonds in 1982, all of those bonds were retired with airport revenues over the years. It was known then as Charlotte Douglas International Airport from 1981, '82 till today. It is the eighth busiest airport in the country, in terms of enplanements, and it is currently a Department of the City and has been since its days in 1935, though in some of those times, it morphed into a private kind of operation in the 40s, and then came back into the city's hands in 1954. That's kind of a little bit of a history, which kind of sets the stage for some of the conversations that have been going on today. And you know, as you have read and heard about from many different reports, that the legislation to create an airport authority was launched in early February of this year. It was quite a surprise and a shock to the city of Charlotte. I think we had about two days' notice that legislation was going to be introduced, and we were scrambling to determine the why. The who was suggesting this. What was going to happen? What was going to be in the legislation? And about three days later, the legislation was put into the hopper, Senate Bill 81, and we spent a lot of time trying to react to the contents and the information that was contained in Senate Bill 81. The upshot of the legislation is that it would transfer land, it would transfer ownership, governance, bonds, operations, leases, contracts, everything of that nature, for Charlotte Douglas International Airport to a new 13-member airport authority. The original legislation was 11 members, and I think the legislation has been tweaked maybe three or four times, maybe even seven times, we've heard, to get it to its current 13-member airport authority. The authority in the legislation as described would be the corporate instrument and agent for the purpose of developing aviation facilities in the counties of Cabarrus, Gaston, Mecklenburg, Lincoln, and Iredell. And I'm sure that you've read the bill, you know the contents of it. I think we also sent you a link to a report that I will cover in a few minutes, and so I hope you've had a chance to at least scan the report, and we'll walk a little bit through the report this afternoon. Appointments to that authority would be made by Charlotte, by Mecklenburg County, by the state of North Carolina, and then also by surrounding counties of Cabarrus, Gaston, Union, Lincoln, and Iredell. So you've been made aware of that, I'm sure. The transfer to an authority would be made within 90 days of Federal Aviation Administration approval. Airport authorities that are created have to go through a, an approval process, and ultimately, they wind up through the Federal Aviation Administration, which is a Department of, the Department of Transportation at the U.S. government. In many reports, it's been widely stated that the city of Charlotte, 11 council members and the mayor are unanimously opposed to Senate Bill 81 as it's currently written. And because they still wanted to engage in a dialogue with the state legislators on this issue, because there was such a push to go this direction, the city council took a step back and agreed to conduct an independent, unbiased study of the governance of airports throughout the country. And so they engaged Bob Hazel. He's a principal in the firm of Oliver Wyman out of Washington, D.C., and they're a very respected national consulting firm on airports. And so he was engaged, and tonight at 5:15 at the Charlotte Mecklenburg Government Center, Mr. Hazel will be officially presenting the results of his report to the Charlotte City Council. So that will occur about an hour from now. So the study was done in less than 60 days, because the legislature had requested that the study be done that fast. The Senate approved Senate Bill 81 and passed it on to the House, and the House of Representatives agreed to hold the bill until such time as the study was conducted and the study results were known. And so the bill sits on the House side now, awaiting the results of this study. The study results that have come forward, and I'm gonna summarize these, and then any other questions that you would like to ask by virtue of the fact that you've reviewed the report as well. The consultant indicated that the case for changing to an airport authority is weak compared to other airports. Throughout the country, from time to time, airports that are departments of city government or of county government, or even of the state, go through changes, and they go through trials and tribulations. And normally, when they go through some bumps in the road, that's when a movement might be taken to consider moving it to an airport authority. So normally, there is something that happens, an event, some political interference, some sort of fraud, or some sort of other type of event would occur, which gives rise to the study of an airport wanting to move from an airport department or to an airport authority. In this case, there were some kinds of issues that developed over time. They were mainly, was U.S. Airways going to have an opportunity to participate in the selection of the next airport director? Our airport director, one of the best in the nation, Jerry Orr, is 72 years old. He will be retiring at some point soon, and there will be a successor that will be named, and there'll be a process carried out nationally. And U.S. Airways had indicated that they wanted to have a seat on the selection committee. There were some issues with bonds. Bonds are sold at the airport as revenue bonds. Some of them are municipal tax exempt bonds, and some of them are municipal taxable bonds. And you have to make sure that you keep those in their proper tranches. And there was some mixing that might have happened in error, and that mixing was creating some, some feedback. And so we dove in and looked at all the bonds and made sure that everything was spent in the right form, and that has been corrected about a year to two years ago. But that was an issue that gave rise to some questioning. And then one of the other ones that happened recently was airport security. There was a need to beef up security at the airport. There were studies done of comparisons with other airports throughout the country. How you staff for that security became an issue, and those were some of the things that were at debate internal to the airport with the city manager, former city manager Kurt Walton. The study nonetheless came back favoring the creation of an authority, but indicated that the current legislation does not meet best practices for how an authority should be created from where it sits today. The study infers that the proposed legislation needs amending and a lengthened implementation schedule to make the transition go smoothly. The study also says among the following, that the board size of a new authority should be between seven and 11 members, and not larger than 11, and the mean number for airports' authority across the country is nine. It said that board appointments should be made by those with an important stake in the airport. It said that Charlotte should appoint the largest number, but not a majority. The study said that Mecklenburg County and local business organizations should appoint several more of the remaining members of the new authority. It said that state appointments are unnecessary, and it said that surrounding county representation should be limited to reflect their lesser involvement in the airport. The study went on further to say that several issues must be addressed and resolved before moving forward on any new airport governance model. And it said that outside expertise should be used to analyze these issues. And the report gave a list of those issues, that they felt more work and more analysis and review needed to be done. And that was board size and representation, outstanding debt, which is a big issue that's reverberating across the state of North Carolina. The outstanding debt issue is a big one. There are legal, financial, and precedent-setting questions that exist and persist, and there's a question and fear that anybody who relies on the issuance of bonds over time for their particular facilities, if those facilities might be at risk in the future from some other movement by the General Assembly similar to this one for other operations in cities and counties throughout North Carolina, that there needed to be some investigation in, as to, and an analysis of the impact in the bond market if the bonds are to be transitioned to an airport authority when they were issued as revenue bonds for the city of Charlotte. Transfer of accounts, general operations and finances, safety and security, land use planning, who is in charge of land use planning in and around the airport? What about noise abatement in and around the airport? What about transfer of employees from municipal government to an authority? What about pension issues associated with those employees? And eminent domain is a big one in terms of whether or not the, a new airport authority would have eminent domain for condemnation purposes. The bottom line that the report summarizes again is that an airport authority is the preferred model according to the consultant, but that greater care and concern needs to be exercised over the transition and the transition period, lengthen the transition period, study the issues more thoroughly before moving to an airport authority. It said that more dialogue is necessary between the city of Charlotte and the state of North Carolina to determine any path forward. The legislation will change. There's been indications from Raleigh that they will consider changes to the legislation. And there must be a lot of weighing in before that revised legislation is available for you. It might not be prudent for others to weigh in right now when we don't know what the final legislation might look like, because it is going to change, and there will be additional dialogue that creates changes to the way the legislation is written today. We all know that this is a hugely critical issue that affects an economic engine for our region. It's a treasure for us all. Moving too quickly and without proper due diligence could be disastrous for everyone, and the last thing anybody wants to do is put at risk the Charlotte Douglas International Airport. The airport now, in many estimates, is a several billion dollar asset. Some say 3 billion, some say 4 billion, some say 5 billion. But whatever dollar value you place on it, it is a huge, huge asset for Charlotte, for Mecklenburg, and for the region. And so I think the bottom line is due diligence. Make sure that any change that happens is done with a lot of forethought and a lot of study, and further analysis and review, and even bringing in outside parties. And that's what I believe the consultant is gonna talk about tonight with the Charlotte City Council. Be happy to entertain questions and answer all of those that I can.
Hey, I also want to recognize the city manager for the city of Concord is here tonight. Mr. Hight, we're happy to have you join us. I know you were interested in, in the discussion, probably as it relates to Cabarrus County, specifically, and the Concord Regional Airport. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Anything in particular that you wanted to get some clarity on?
I guess one of the primary questions that I have had, and others that I've talked to, is we consider our Concord Regional Airport to be a huge asset as well. I'm not sure we'd hit 4 billion, but, you know, it's unclear to me, perhaps you'd have a better insight into how the legislation as it stands now might affect our regional airport as well as Douglas. And I know there are other counties that have that issue as well.
The legislation still says the authority would be the corporate instrument and agent for the purpose of developing aviation facilities in Cabarrus, Gaston, Mecklenburg, Union, Lincoln, and Iredell. I think it's still maybe unclear as to how that would all take place, and that more clarification is needed to determine what the impact of those statements and that language in the bill would actually connote and convey for airports in the region outside of Charlotte Douglas International Airport.
And following up on the other comment that you made about the legislation is probably going to undergo changes for anybody to take a position, either in support of or against the current legislation, we really don't know what that is at this point.
That is, in our minds, that is correct. We've been told that the legislation will change. We don't know how it will change, but we've received feedback that it will change. And I think a lot of that would be based on the consultant's report that was issued and some of the findings in the report, saying that the legislation needs to exhibit more of best practices as you move from a department to an airport authority.
Well, thank you again for coming to talk to us tonight, especially when you're probably quite anxious to get back and hear what the consultant says at your meeting.
I love being in Cabarrus County. But I also love going back home, too.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would like to ask, you said, you know, Charlotte Douglas is the eighth busiest airport in the United States. The one through seven other busiest airports, how many of those are authorities?
I think I read in the report that Charlotte is eight at about 20 million enplanements per year. The largest is heart-spelled in Atlanta at 44 million enplanements, just to give you the difference. And I think of the top 10, four are authorities and six are departments. And in the top 25, I think nine or 10 are authorities and 15 or 16 are departments.
Okay. And how can we access the report that will be presented tonight?
We sent a link to County Manager Downs, and I think he sent that same link to you all, so that you could have access to it.
Thank you. Okay, great.
Will the presentation tonight be available online, or, I'm assuming that y'all have y'all's meetings online?
It'll be recorded. It's in a work session, similar to the work session here, not in our council chambers, but it will be recorded and be available.
And is that on the city website? Would that be YouTube? Does it get posted?
It'll be on the city website.
Okay. When you're talking about the authority, or not the authority, when you're talking about Charlotte Douglas International, the revenues that are generated from the airport, what goes, what happens to those revenues?
They stay with the airport.
Okay. And is that for future growth, expansion, or routine maintenance? Or not routine, but that just reduces their budget?
It's, that is their budget. It's linked with the federal and state monies that come from expansion of the airport. But all the revenues of the airport stay at the airport, and they're used for daily operations, they're used for expansion, improvements, enlargements, you know, just the growth of the airport is staggering and is significant, and those revenues are plowed back in to the growth of the airport.
Okay. The size of the airport is 3 billion plus. Is that conserv, is that safe to say?
I think that's safe to say.
Okay. And it's grown to, to become an asset not only for Charlotte, but for the region?
That is correct.
Okay. The expansion of the airport, or the growth of the airport, is dictated by what authority at this point in time?
The Charlotte City Council approves the budget of the airport. It's a Department of the City. All the monies that are generated there are public dollars. Even though there are revenues that are generated at the airport, they're still all considered public dollars.
Okay. So that the...
It's an enterprise fund of the city of Charlotte.
The development of the airport, or the, you're getting the most out of that asset is at the discretion of the city council?
Yes, there is an airport advisory committee. Those members are appointed by the Charlotte City Council, and it's been in existence for decades. And most of the business of the airport that is gonna come to the dais of the Charlotte City Council for action would first go through the airport advisory committee for their perusal and their review. And then it comes on to the Charlotte City Council, who has final vote and final authority.
Are you able to talk much tonight about the intermodal, development of the intermodal portion of the airport, or aspect of the airport?
Yeah, it's a large facility. The connection of air, rail, sea, truck, coming together at the airport. It's located and being constructed between the second and third parallel runways of the airport, depressed into the ground. It's about a $90 million facility that's being built by Norfolk Southern. It's on land owned by the city of Charlotte that is in the control of the airport, and the airport leases that land to Norfolk Southern at a fair market rate in order to receive the proper revenue flow that the federal government requires for the operations of an intermodal yard.
And the idea of what Norfolk Southern's gonna do is then disperse it either by rail or by...
Truck.
Truck.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we have one of Norfolk Southern's rail lines coming through Cabarrus County, is that correct? One's Norfolk and one's CSI, or CSX?
And it's a very critical facility, because the Panama Canal is being widened, and the larger ships from Asia, that's the reason why the Panama Canal is being widened. And many ports on the East Coast are gonna be the recipient of more goods that are, and raw products that are coming to and from Asia, and trying to strengthen the connections. And we can get to Norfolk, Charleston, Savannah, Jacksonville, and Miami, all out of the Charlotte Douglas Airport on Norfolk Southern.
Right.
So it's very important to have that connection to the East Coast ports.
In regards, I didn't catch all that you mentioned in regards to these, these study that was made in regards to eminent domain, noise abatement, things of that nature. Those are handled through the airport now, but under the auspices of the city of Charlotte?
Correct.
And having its sovereign immunity, or sovereignty, being the justification for any one of those positions?
Yes.
Okay.
And as you transition then to an authority, it would be very important to know how those issues are gonna be handled in the future. And that's some of the consultant's requests for study, and making sure that those are resolved prior to any decision or any transfer to an authority.
Now, in the study, I didn't see where it fully discussed the, the aspects of the bonds and what would happen in the transfer of the bonds. I understand what you're saying, and I agree with that, about the future going, what's gonna happen in the future. But was there a portion of the study that actually addressed the bond issue and what would happen to current bonds at the Charlotte Douglas?
The study did not go into depth about what to do with the bonds. It simply stated, be careful and be sure that you know how the bonds are gonna be handled in the transition from local government to an authority.
Now, in trying to follow it in the papers, there were some, there were some articles that alluded to an opinion that was done. Is that in fact true? And if it was, is that accessible to look at, to understand it better?
There are competing bond council opinions and bond underwriters' opinions, and you've probably read and heard most of those, and I think those are available online. I'll make sure that they are. But the city's bond council gave an opinion, and then a bond council from Louisiana was sought by Senator Rucho, and that opinion became known. And then the state treasurer, through the head of the local government commission, weighed in with a caution to be careful about what you do with the bonds. So there's competing in many opinions that are out there for review.
One thing that I'm just kinda, that I'm trying to get a better understanding, a better feel for, is what, what I find ironic is that the study says that the change to an authority is weak, but it is recommended. So if it's, if the change is a weak decision to change, but yet it is, it should be changed, to me, that, it's almost a no-brainer, it should be done, based on the language that's in the study. I mean, it's not like it's a weak change, it's a weak time to change, and therefore it shouldn't be done, or it's very strong to change and maybe it should be done.
Right.
It's a weak decision to change, and then it says, although it's a weak decision, it should, it still should be changed.
Right. The consultant indicated that normally something sparks a desire on somebody's part to move from a department to an authority. The consultant has said the airport has been spectacularly successful in most regards, including its low cost and high service quality. Charlotte Douglas International Airport is the lowest-cost-per-enplayment airport of the top 25 in the country. It's been operated very efficiently and very well as a Department of the City. However, I think the consultant would say that long-term into the future, that in his opinion, moving from a department to an authority, so he's looking forward and looking future rather than looking back, in, not to put words in his mouth.
Right.
But to this point, he said that the case for making the change is weak, and those are his words, not mine.
To making the change, but in spite of that, he's still recommending to change?
Yes. He said the case for change is weak. Nevertheless, going forward for the future, there are some reasons why I believe that an airport authority is the better model. He didn't say that the current situation is not good, he just said that the airport authority is a better model.
I understand. And has anything... And has anything, I'd guess, I don't know if the authority has been the Asheville Authority, Asheville Airport Authority. I guess that's too new or too infant in its stage of progression to have a, use as a comparison?
There have been comparisons made, and to date, the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, has not signed off on approval for making the Asheville Airport an authority.
But it's moved into an authority already? Is that, I'm trying, I don't know what stage it is.
I think it transitioned into one, but it's not official until the FAA blesses it, and I don't think the FAA has blessed it yet. So there, there's a, it's in a, a tough situation right now. I don't think it's fully there, and it's ma, it's gone halfway there, but it hasn't been approved and blessed yet by FAA.
Is there anything right now that you know of that would, that the FAA would not approve it?
I think that we've been told that the entity that must request consideration of it moving to an authority is the city of Asheville.
Okay. And I'm, there is, I don't remember seeing much in articles discussing that in detail here in our part of North Carolina. Did the city of Charlotte request, I mean, excuse me, the city of Asheville request that? Or was that...
I don't believe that they have as yet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you know why that all of a sudden they came up and want to have an airport authority instead of let Charlotte operate this airport like they've always done? Has it got anything to do with the Charlotte City Council, or did somebody over there just get mad and decide they wanted to take away from Charlotte?
I think that the things that have been referenced are, there were three issues. One of them was who was going to provide security at the airport? Was it going to continue to be the Charlotte Douglas Airport Police, or was it going to be Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department providing that security? That was one issue. The bonds was a second issue, and then US Airways having a say-so on the selection team for the new director that would be the successor to Jerry Ohr. Those were the three predominant issues that have been talked about, and they were in Bob Hazel's report as the three issues that seemed to be on people's minds that suggested that it should move from a department to an airport authority. For many weeks, it was unknown to the city of Charlotte and the elected leadership, the council and the mayor, who might be behind this in the business community, and eventually you saw, as we did, that some of the folks who were suggesting this have been placed out there in articles and in quotes that they've made in the last many weeks.
Didn't the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police take over security at the airport?
They have, at the direction of...
At a higher cost, wasn't it?
It was at a higher, any increase in security would have led to higher costs, but they are more expensive than the airport police per person and the equipping of those individuals.
I think one other thing you might, how long is US Air going to fly in and out of there? How long are they going to be in business?
Well, American's going to be in business, we hope, for a long time. That's the new merged airline, but I know what you mean, and we would hope that they are there for...
I heard somebody say not long ago that they had one small bankrupt airline, now they had one large bankrupt airline.
It will be very important to keep Charlotte Douglas International Airport as a hub for the new merged American Airlines, and that is another issue that we want to make sure that all of us pay attention to. It's, it's ironic, too, that Charlotte Douglas is one of the largest airports in terms of the number of people who fly through and aren't what's called O and D, origin and destination. A large percentage of our persons that use the airport are flying through because it's a big hub for US Airways. It was US Airways' largest hub, even over and above Phoenix, which was the, the home base.
Mr. Hyatt, do you want to add any? Is there anything that you want to add? I don't want to miss calling on you. I mean, I guess for me, I mean, I think there's, there's still a lot that's up in the air in Cabarrus County. I mean, I've been told in emails that Cabarrus County was not going to be included in the legislation, but I haven't seen legislation, I mean, sorry, not Cabarrus County. City Concord's airport was not going to be included, and then, but I haven't seen legislation taking it out either, so I don't know if you have any additional information?
Obviously, the sections eight and nine, I believe those are the sections of the legislation are the ones we're concerned about where it does indicate that the adjacent counties are included in it. The wording is nebulous, we don't know what it means, but we're concerned about it because of that. And obviously, a general aviation airport like ours is very different from a commercial airport in terms of the operations and the funding mechanisms and such. So that, that is the main concern. We have expressed our concerns to our legislators, and they understand those concerns and have indicated that they're working on that, but as yet, we've seen no alternate wording suggested.
Anybody have any other questions? Well, we really do appreciate you coming out, both of you, joining us for our meeting. It's, it's nice to have you come to Cabarrus County, and I think we felt like it was important to try to get more information than just what was in the paper, and that was the reason that we wanted to invite you to come and, and share us, with us some information. So we really do appreciate it from, from both of your perspectives.
We're pleased that you asked the city of Charlotte to come tonight. Thank you very much for inviting us.
I have one, one final question that I just can't resist. Why did y'all decide to build an airport over on the west side?
Did you, did you hear former Mayor John Belk's answer?
I wanted to see if you gave the same answer.
Okay, okay. So everybody knows what that answer is? Because that's where the planes land?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. We do appreciate you coming. Let's go back up to 3.1. We have Mr. Wickes here. I think Mr. Crabtree must have had to step out, so I'm sorry for that confusion on my part. For an update on the qualified school construction bonds, the QSCBs.
I'm going to wear two hats. I have a short statement on Mr. Crabtree's behalf. Will certainly apologizes for having to leave, but he had a meeting he had to attend. His statement was that the Kannapolis Intermediate Schools roof has been completed, and all of the required paperwork has now been submitted on all of his projects to DPI, so Department of Public Instruction. So in effect, his, his projects are now 100% complete. All paperwork has been submitted. And he thanks you for your assistance in getting that done.
And you're going to give us the same report, right?
I wish I was quite, really quite there. We're getting closer for certain. The, I'm going to ask to go to the milestone, if you would. Yep, thank you. The milestone report is the blue-topped or banded one, and it basically gives a overview of the project completions and where we're at overall. And as of last week, we in effect did finalize the punch list items and in fact are now calling Central Cabarrus Window and Doors Complete. That, that project is done. We, we have some paperwork, as usual, that we still have to clear from the contractor and the architect, but that shouldn't take more than a few weeks. With the gymnasium addition at Northwest, it's going very well. They're progressing as the weather permits them on the addition, but the interior demolition and utilities, excuse me, building services is going very well. So they still are on target to complete on time. The kitchen hood replacement is about ready to bid. That is, the design has been in review and it's been submitted to DPI. We're just waiting for, excuse me, we did get comments back, we're waiting for the consultant to make those modifications and then to put the project out to bid. And again, that, that's a project that we look to do during the summer because it's pretty disruptive, as you might imagine, to the kitchen, so we'll wait until July to begin that work. With boiler replacement, much the same thing. That project is, I believe now the, the documents are ready to go to DPI and, and are some, being submitted to our office for review, and will, will again be bid, so that construction will take place this summer. The weight room and Voget Building, that project is being bid in days, so we should have results on the 8th, and hopefully will be on, on target cost-wise and be able to recommend proceeding to our board. The practice fields continue to, to hold in a kind of a holding pattern. We asked the consultant to get back to us with a breakdown of cost for what work we could do and sort of if we could phase it, what, what those phases might look like in terms of dollars and cents. And so we are getting that information from them, and hopefully, once, there's another project we've talked about, it's the J. N. Freeze Roofing Project. That project is going to be bid towards the end of May, and once we know what the costs are there, we'll know whether or not we have funds to, to do anything at the fields or, in that case, in any other, other projects. But we really want to, as we discussed last month, we really want to bid the roofing project to know that we can complete that project and be done with the roof on the, on the middle school once and for all. So that, that's sort of where the fields are holding tight at the moment. The electrical vault upgrades, that project is complete. We are, I believe we've just received the, the missing invoice, and that work should be, the paperwork should be complete this month. As well as the electrical panels, their, Duke Energy is supposed to get us the final wrap-up paperwork from, from their organization to us in May so we can complete that project as well. I mentioned the roof at J. N. Freeze, it's going to be bid towards the end of May, and hopefully we'll be able to see that project under construction in July. The remaining projects still remain postponed, and I'll certainly entertain any questions you have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on the QSCB milestone report? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Could, I have a, well, you're going to be our next item, too, but I have a, a question or a request, I guess. The projects that are going, that are being funded by one-time money, you have a number of those projects. Can you do a report kind of like this one for the, those one-time monies?
Yes, ma'am.
So that, I mean, I like this, I like this particular, well, what was up there. I like that report because I can kind of track it and see where you are. So I think on the one-time money project, would be nice to see it in a similar spreadsheet, if you could do that.
Certainly.
Of course, I'd appreciate it.
Be happy to do that.
Okay. The next item we have is the planetarium. This is on there, commissioners, because I think you were having a consultant to come in, but I don't remember when the consultant was coming or if you even have the report yet, so...
I don't have the report. I spoke to him this afternoon. He, he was at the school last week, I want to say Wednesday. And in looking at the equipment that we have, he felt certain that they could up, bring it back into operating condition. There are some parts that are broken, there are some parts that are missing. Oddly enough, they've, they've collected, and in the warehouse, they have five of them, so they have lots of replacement parts that they can provide us with, and that's important because it's quite an old unit, and, and that's, was certainly of concern. So he's putting together a report that would sort of give us a menu of costs for upgrading this unit, improving it, adding things to it. He did suggest that, for those of us interested, there's the identical unit with several upgrades in Salisbury, and he recommends taking a look at that, that facility, that, that unit, and seeing how we like what they have, because according to him, they've added things like a lighting system, video systems, a sound system, and certain basic upgrades to the system to do what it can now do. He said it just simply depends on where the commissioners choose to go with, with the improvements. But, oh, and, and there were some physical plant things. There, there is a, and I didn't realize this when we first talked, the chairs that are in there, though they are newer than what was there originally, they are not the correct chairs for viewing an astrology display. They don't have a, a support for the neck, so you'd have people with very stiff necks, or very strange necks, I should say, using the chairs that are there. They're really basically a high-quality classroom, or like a small auditorium-type seating, and it really, he, he, again, it'll, it'll be part of this list of ideas and costs that he provides to us. He would recommend down the road or at some point of replacing the seats that are in there. There are a few seats that are broken now, but I think the major concern would be that if you have somebody sitting there for 30 minutes or 40 minutes, you're going to get a pretty stiff neck because there is no support for you right now, so. But we should have his report hopefully by the end of this week, and certainly by next week sometime, so I'll be able to forward that to y'all for your next meeting. Take a look at that.
I think that would be great if we could get it for our regular meeting, and...
Yes, ma'am.
You usually show up at that one, too, for some reason or other, so we may have some questions then, if we get to look at it.
That'd be fun.
But I think it's, it's prudent for Cabarrus County Schools and for the commissioners to make sure we understand the whole scope of that project before we make decisions on which way to go, so.
Yes.
I'm glad that you've got an expert to come in and look at it, so.
He was very kind. He, he actually made this trip simply because he was going through the area, and he stopped off and spent the better part of the afternoon with us, so it, very, very nice of him. And of course, he's hoping to do some business with the county and the school, but, you know, I, I think he's also, like most people involved in this business, he's, he's really very much into what he does, and he's excited about the opportunity, so.
Any questions at this point?
The Salisbury Planetarium, I was looking, it seems like they're very active in, in a lot of events going on throughout the month. I could not find a physical address for where the planetarium is. It looks like it's connected through the school system, but I'd, do you have an address?
I, I don't. I can certainly get one. I do know it's immediately adjacent to the, to the college campus.
To the college campus?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I will get an address for you, so.
That's fine, I can find it from there. I just, I was just trying to find a street address, and it didn't have it on their website.
I know, I was, I was visiting the campus, the Catawba College, and was looking at, in what I thought was the astrology dome.
Okay.
And that, so it is right, appears to be right next door, so.
Well, if I get arrested, I'll give you a call.
Okay. I know a good attorney.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think we have you anywhere else on here, do we? Do you know, we appreciate you coming out. You probably have another meeting to go to, too, don't you? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dennis Testerman. It's item 4.1 to talk to us about proposed terms for a stream restoration project on Back Creek. Dennis, I know you're here. There you are. And I failed to point out, we do have Finance Director for Cabarrus County Schools is here with us tonight, Kelly. We always appreciate you coming. Mr. Testerman?
And I have asked Jeremy Poploski with Moguson Mitigation, Inc. to join me in the anticipation that there might be some questions that he's more conversant with than I am. We are working with the Cabarrus Saltwater Conservation District Board. Last year, signed an agreement with Moguson Mitigation, Inc. to, to partner with them on seeking out stream restoration projects. We previously had an agreement with the State Ecosystem Enhancement Program, and due to changes mandated by the state legislature, they were no longer able to pursue projects like they had previously. That relationship with Ecosystem Enhancement Program resulted in a handful of projects in Cabarrus County. The one most relevant to, to what we're talking about tonight was a project that took place on the campuses of Harris Road Middle School and Odell Elementary School. And so this is a similar type project where we're looking at whether or not there would be acceptable mitigation credits that could be obtained from restoring Back Creek. The farmer that's farming the land across from the school campuses originally approached us about the problem, and we looked at it and thought, well, let's, let's try this new relationship with Moguson out and see where it goes. And so where it's led up to now is they think it, it has the potential to be a viable project for them to invest time and energy and resources in moving forward. They're, at this point, are seeking to enter into an agreement with the school system and with the county. They've already signed an agreement with the, the landowner, just as a way of formalizing the relationship and making sure everybody's on the same page moving forward. So again, basically what we're asking at this point is for the county is to be able to move forward that project and do some additional studies. It would involve access on the part of Moguson to the site to be able to gather additional information that they ultimately will take to the folks that, that grant the mitigation credits to find out whether in fact we do or not have a viable project.
Commissioners, questions, please? Is Back Creek the one that runs behind those schools?
It, yes, behind. It, yes, behind them, and, and between them and Stallings Road.
Okay. I would ask, then, about the, the bridge going over and extending Raging Ridge. Is there any concern, conflict? I mean, we have that on here, too. We've been working for a long time to connect that road over to Stallings.
We have been, and that was my first comment to Dennis, when he brought this project forward, was, we are going to move forward with that road extension and bridge project, so we would want the, we need to make sure the two can coexist. As it is, the, the design, really, is not, we're using the existing location of the creek, we're not, there's no diversion of the creek for the bridge or road extension. We're really spanning the Hundred Year Flood Plain, so there isn't a great deal of effect on the creek itself from the bridge project.
And, this would, this particular project would not impact the bridge project? Is that true?
We, we, we have gotten far enough along in our design and engineering that it could not. I mean, I guess we could adjust it, but it would be expensive for us, too, so we would want the project to, to move, if, if the stream restoration moved forward, it would need to do so with the idea that that bridge is going to be in place in that location.
And, you're aware of the, the bridge project that we're talking about? Are you, or, should I say, are you aware that we're going to span the-
I was not, no.
Okay. I think you definitely did need, need to know about that, and some of the plans, we're gonna talk about that later.
We've talked with Mr. Moguson about that. He was unable to be here today. He's at a national mitigation meeting, as we speak, so, but he's aware of that. And, also, there is a existing sewer line on the whatever side, between the creek and Stallings Road, that we've also got to work with. It's fairly typical that you've got constraints like that. We had the same situation between the, the two schools up off of Harris Road.
Sewer lines typically follow a creek. We hope. Yes, do you want to add?
Just a question, what you're gonna do is study the feasibility of, of performing something out there. So, you would come back to the board with a full-blown grant, and then, at that time, there, I'm sure there would be a local match required to do some of this work? And, how much are you looking at?
Actually, the, the, the reason that we were so excited to, to initially be working with the Ecosystem Enhancement Program is, a lot of these projects are just, they helped us address problems that I've been aware of ever since I've been here. I know, when we were doing the Harrisburg Area Plan, Commissioner White and I had some conversations at that meeting about some of the latest in a long history of complaints from landowners along Back Creek. That's just been a problem area forever and a day. It, it drains the east side of Mecklenburg County, where there's been a lot of dense development. So, the thing that we've liked about these projects is that, that the way they worked with EEP and the way that we, I'm sorry, Ecosystem Enhancement Program, and the way that we're proceeding with, with Moguson, is that there'll be a turnkey project, that there should be enough dollars in the mitigation credits that are being purchased upon completion of this project, to do a turnkey job. So, no, at this time, we aren't, and, we are not anticipating any local match or monetary input, either from, for many of the landowners, whether that's the farmer that initially came to us with the problem, or, or from the county, or from the school system. We would, the donation of the easement, I guess, as a, as an in-kind match, which, again, that's, that, we've done a number of projects on that basis, that would be. And then, staff time that would go towards that. And, there are provisions for the, the district staff to be compensated for their input. That was part of our original agreement with Moguson, which would go back in to defray salary and expenses, go back into the general fund.
How much of Back Creek are you, are you talking about? I mean, what's the-
It's approximately 5,000 linear feet, so almost a mile.
And, the, the owners, right now, are primarily the, the two schools that are there and the farmer?
Those are the largest ones. There are, I don't know, probably at least a half dozen that it would take to kind of round that project out.
Yeah, I think there's about eight property owners.
Have you talked to any of those at this point in time, or are you just not far enough along to talk to the other property owners?
We've talked to at least one. I don't know that you all have talked to any.
Yes, there, there's been discussions with a couple of the property owners, but after this meeting, we, we're planning to continue.
So, our commissioners, do you have questions? Okay. And, we don't have a, it says, "Proposed Terms," is what we're supposed to be looking at. I don't, is there attachment further back, or?
I was consulting with, with the department head, just before I came up here. Apparently, there was some technological glitch in setting up that agenda item, and I apologize, I thought I checked behind to make sure everything fit together, but apparently it didn't. There is an agreement, which we will make sure you get at our, at our earliest opportunity. It's a one-pager. I have it in front of me on my, my iPhone, if you have any specific questions. I mean, I could read out the terms to you real quick, but it might be just as easy for you to look at those prior to your regular meeting.
Right now, we have it on our action agenda item, so I just think we need to get it, so that we can all look at it in advance of that meeting. And, that's fine. And then, we can, I mean, I'm fine with getting an emailed copy of it later on this week, so that we have a chance to look at it, and then we can, you know, respond with any questions back to you, that we might have, just so that, you know, when you get there at our regular meeting, you'd know what our questions were. I like for, if you're gonna come to the meeting, I'd like for you to kind of have some heads up on any questions that we might have, so that we can, you know, use the time wisely, so. All right? No other questions? All right. Thank you both, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is the, it's the Charlotte Regional Airport Authority, and we had the presentation earlier. Is there any discussion concerning, anybody wants to share, or thoughts you have concerning that item, or the input that we received, is?
Are we gonna get anybody to come in and talk, talk about the reason why it should be an authority, as opposed to having the City of Concord's opinion?
I'll try to get somebody here for the regular-
Try to have somebody here for the regular meeting.
I mean, I don't think that Mr. Dorsh has any ties to the City of Charlotte anymore. He's been ceremonially removed, so he may be able to talk about why it's important. Now, that may be a biased opinion, but it's probably no more biased than Mr. Kimball's.
And, I think, once we can get there, see if there's, what happens tonight with their presentation, we may be able to answer some, you know, hopefully, the newspapers will report it well, so that we can understand kind of what some of the issues are. Any other comments, questions?
You know, I would just say that, you know, certainly, one of the comments that was made tonight, "We don't know what the bill's gonna be, yet." And, I'm not sure if we will, in advance of them voting on it. So, that, I would be very reluctant to take a position either direction, you know, until we know that, but it's always great to get more information.
I agree, I'll, you know, be looking for the report, and I know you said that it'd been sent out. I'm, I'm not sure that if I got that, so.
You may have missed it. It was attached to the email just announcing that Mr. Kimball was coming here.
Okay.
So, you may have missed it, if you were looking on your cell phone.
Maybe in my spam box, but I'll look for that, and then also, the presentation tonight, before the City Council of Charlotte. I think we can go from there.
I think we'll wait and see what the final bill is, what's gonna be involved in it.
Well, that's kind of where I'm leaning to. I'd like to see where they're gonna go with it, and I think we're being very, very prudent to make sure we have plenty of information in any actions that we take, so. All right. The next item, 4.3. Commissioner Burridge, you had asked us to table, table this concerning the Second Amendment, and to bring it back up at the, to not vote on it at our regular meeting, and we did not have anybody that came out and spoke at our regular meeting. We did the previous month, but, any comments concerning this item?
No, I'd like to say just leave it like it is.
Leave what like it is?
Leave it the way the county manager, I mean, the county attorney drew it up.
Okay, the one that's in our agenda?
The one that's in our agenda, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have comments?
Put it on the consent agenda.
That was my next que, I was, what I was flipping to look and make sure. Okay, well, we'll get to that when we look at the actual agenda. Good enough. 4.4. We have some visitors, more visitors tonight. It's so nice to have people come see us that we don't get to see very often. We have some, some folks from the Board of Elections. Do y'all wanna, do you, do you wanna come up? And Giles, y'all, I think all three of you need to come up. Yeah, but, you know, we might want to harass you just a little bit. I mean that in the nicest of ways, of course. I believe there was an article in the, or, I heard it, I think, on the, the TV today. I think there was article maybe yesterday's paper, Sunday's paper, concerning the Board of Elections' new director. Want to share anything with us?
Well, I think it's, you know, it's kind of sad for Cabarrus County that we're gonna lose a, a particular director. Linda Griss has done a fine job for 21 years, and whether some of you know it or not, across the state, Cabarrus County has looked on very fondly because of the way Linda has ran the Board of Elections at Cabarrus County, and we've kept your names out of the paper, and done a good job with that, and she's did that for 21 years. And, it's sad that we're gonna leave her, she's gonna leave us. But, we also feel like that we have filled that position with a young lady who has a lot of experience. She's been on our board for 12 years. She has a degree in music, and, of course, she has a degree in law, but she is certified by the state. We did it in-house, and we're very proud that Carol accepted the job. So, we hope that y'all will go along with what we've kind of picked up.
And, as I understand it, the procedure is that your board selected Carol, and then she was approved by the North Carolina Board of Elections?
That is true.
And, that the item, or the action before us is, is just to approve her starting salary?
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
What's the process, when you say the North Carolina Board of Elections approved, or what, what were they looking at, and what was, why, why are they involved in it, other than them being the-
The local board, it's, it's made up by three members. The majority by the sitting governor, and we have a process that we go through, and we, we pick the person that we think will do the best job, and then, the state, basically, just, it's kind of a stamp-type situation. We send it down there for them to approve it. I mean, they also check, you know, the person themselves, but they do not get in the process of picking this person. It's basically on a local level of the three members that serve at the discretion of the governor and the two political parties.
Is this a bonded position? And, we're talking about voting on the salary. Is this a commensurate salary for her skills, since she is not coming with any sort of experience, other than being on the board, I suspect?
I, I think with the knowledge she has, as being a board member, they're sort of, they're sort of, under Giles' direction, and, and Ms. Solz have been working, board members, for several years. They actually do participate in the election, so I think that, along with her law degree, she is, this, the, the salary is, is in, is in line. I don't, I don't know the, exactly, the step number of what that is.
Should be around step 16.
Yeah, so.
And, 31 is job rate.
Right. So, she's, she's very much in line.
I might add, on our scale, we went from, what was the bottom and the high, and we went to the, we went in the middle.
He's referring to the, the starting and the job rate. The, the actual scale goes much higher for years, so, so that is, that is what we would, what would be available to hire, within that range.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I know you have another board member back there, so, who are the three members, you said there's three members on your board? Who are the three members on your board?
Carol Solz was a member on our board, and, of course, she had to resign to apply for the job. And, Shupin, back here beside of Linda, Linda's threatened me all day long not to have her come up here, but, you know, Linda's sitting back here, but the lady with Linda is my other board member. There's only two of us now, and the two political parties will be appointing their people. The Republican Party will appoint two people, and that will go to Raleigh, and the Democrat Party will nominate one person, and a governor will appoint those three people. It'll be a new board come July.
That was my next question. So, July 1st, you serve through, the end of June?
Two, we do two years, but anyway, the new board will, isn't it, I think it's the, end of June was when they're actually, the names are sent in, they're appointed, and then they take over July. So, there'll be three new board members coming to the Board of Elections.
So, lots of change at the Board of Elections.
There has been a lot in the past few years with all of the new federal and state regulations and all. And, of course, we think, you know, recently, about three weeks ago, we had, Cabarrus County hosted 100 counties of all of the Board of Election Directors across the state of North Carolina. Mr. White was there and spoke to the audience, and, you know, it's, it's, it's really great that they came, and, and, you know, and we, we want to say to y'all that we appreciate, you know, the support that you've given the Board of Elections. We certainly like our new building. The rest of the state loves our new building, and can't believe that we got that, that nice of building. You'd be amazed at across the states, what some of the Board of Elections have to work, work in, but we do thank you. You've always been very supportive. On election night, we always have the, Pam and Mike is always there, so, you know, and we have this IT staff there and all, and you're very supportive in what we do. It, it is very important, what the Board of Elections does, and we want to make sure that we do get it right, so that our names, any of our names, aren't in the paper on Monday morning. But, we'll probably, I'm sure that I won't be, but someone will be coming to you for some money in the future, for some new equipment, so, but y'all have been very nice, and we thank you for it.
Seeing that Linda will be leaving the end of June, we have a presentation for her, recognition for her in June or July, at our general meeting?
It's on the June 17th meeting.
Okay.
Linda, that means you have to show up, so.
If not, it's a Linda Griss roast.
That's right.
And, you have to come up front.
I think she ought to have to make a speech.
I think it'll be a Linda Griss roast, no matter what. I mean, you know, if that's the one shot we get of having her at a microphone, standing in front of us, I have a feeling we all need to be, we have, we have plenty of time to get prepared. You do, too. Okay. There any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is the, for the Cabarrus Rowan MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, Memorandum of Understanding, I think. Jonathan, are you gonna talk about that?
I am, and I was gonna offer that if you want to add it, add to discussion, you're welcome to. As you are aware, we're a member of the, the Cabarrus Rowan Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is our regional transportation planning group. We have added members, some of the smaller cities in both Cabarrus and Rowan, over time, but it is inclusive of all the cities within Cabarrus and Rowan, plus the two counties. Because we've added members, it was time to update the memorandum of understanding, as well as our federal partners wanted us to up, and state partners wanted us to update that, so that a draft has been forwarded to all the jurisdictions. It's been approved by both the staff-level committee, which I chair at the MPO, as well as the elected-level committee, which Chairman Poole chairs. Both recommended it unanimously, although we had more discussion at the elected level than, than we did at the, the staff level. It is also, it has been adopted by some of the member governments already, so it is moving forward for each one of the member governments to consider for adoption, and then they'll circulate the documents for signature.
Are there any questions? City of Concord does continue as the lead planning organization. The discussion that we had in my board was around what the duties are of the lead organization, lead planning organization. City of Concord provides a lot of time, and staff time, and kind of the mechanics of making it work. I always like to chuckle, people ask me, you know, "Oh, it must be exciting to be a county commissioner," and my response is, "I learned a lot about roads, bridges, and burning sludge." Because those are the groups that y'all are kindly letting me serve on. I have learned a lot. It is kind of interesting what- It is kind of interesting, um, what, what goes on with all the transportation projects and the, the change that's gonna come out of Raleigh as far as how the funding is gonna come. I think it should be quite interesting as we continue. So, again, this is just to approve the memorandum of understanding, to update it with the, the members that are there, and designate City of Concord again as the lead planning organization. If there are no questions, that was a whole lot easier here than it was at the other meeting. The next item is Pam Dewey, I think you're gonna talk about convert board-approved leave-share policy to an administrative policy.
Yes, on January 18th, 1994, the board approved a leave-share policy that is, the county has been operating under. We are evaluating all the policies in the county, and over the next several months, I will be bringing certain policies to go through this particular process of converting them from board-approved policies to administrative policies based on the nature of what the, the action is. So, we are requesting that the leave-share policy to be converted to an administrative policy to allow any changes to be made to that policy at the discretion of the county manager. The current policy is attached, but in tying in with the personnel ordinance, it makes it more conducive for the manager to be able to make adjustments to the policy if it's under the administrative discretion, so that's why we're here this evening to ask if we can have this reverted from board-approved policy to an administrative policy.
County manager?
Yeah, we, we converted several, when we redid the, when we re-rise the personnel ordinance several, couple, two, three years ago, I guess. We, we moved a lot of those policies that were in there to administrative policy, so we didn't have to come back to make cosmetic changes, to, to make some substantial changes, but most of those would always come back. This is another one of those policies that we did not change, or did not move over. If you're not familiar with the policy, it's when we have an employee that has, has to be out of work for a very extended period of time, and for whatever reason, if they've been good stewards of their annual leave and their sick leave, there, there are some times that, that the term of them being out extends on past that. So, this is an opportunity for their fellow employees to donate some of their sick leave or their vacation leave to, to, to that person so that they would continue to have a, a paycheck while they're out. The governing board of this are, is made up of their fellow employees, who I can tell you are very strict when they, they look and revise or, or review these, and they think, they take their job very seriously before they were, before they give out any of this. But currently, we only allow you to give.
Vacation.
Vacation. We're looking to, to maybe expand that to sick leave, but we do, we don't allow you to, if I was wanting to give leave myself to donate leave, we wanna make sure, the first thing we look at is, do you have enough leave left over that you're gonna be able to take care of yourself should you come up to one of these situations? So, same thing, whether it's vacation or sick, there's, there's always a mandatory bank that you have before you're able to do it, and you're only allowed to do so many hours a year as well, so. And currently, we do not allow, it's not pick and choose who you give it to, it's a bank. So, then, when it goes in, you don't know who it's going to, it's a bank, and it's, if there's hours available in there, then you can apply for it as an employee, so.
From a fiscal point of view, the overall donations into the bank have come in at a higher salary range than what they have gone back out. So, the county has, I guess, gained over that perspective of time, but we feel like the benefit to the employee who is out for a particular leave, maybe they are subject to cancer or extensive surgery, this requiring them to be out for a long period of time. The other thing we wanted to point out to you is, a great deal of the people who have received that leave, once they have recovered, have been donors to donate back to the plan as far as believing in the plan and, and supporting the other employees. It's been a very good relationship amongst different departments of supporting each other as far as taking care of those needs, but there is no downside that we can see from the, the process in which it's working as far as a loss in the county's perspective as far as the cost of the, the plan is concerned.
Any questions or comments?
If it's working so well as is, why do we need to change it? I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, I mean, why do we need to change it from a board to administrative policy? If it's working so well?
We don't, we don't have to change it. Again, it's just with some of the other policies, we moved them over to administrative policies so that it doesn't take up time on, on your agenda. If you wanted to leave it as, as, as is, we're open to that as well.
I understand. I'm just trying to figure out what's, if it ain't broke, why are we fix, why are we trying to fix it?
Well, we're not.
Or trying to change it?
We're not fixing the ordinance.
I understand.
Yeah, so, like I said, that's just an option. We can make them internally, if not, if you want them to come back every time that we do something, we can always bring it back.
Any other comments or questions? I think it's a good policy to have. It's nice that, you know, when somebody has an emergency, that, that there's a policy in place to help out fellow employees, so. I think, I know that, I have one at my work. I offered one time to donate some time, and I think everybody else got there before me, so it, I didn't end up donating any, but, but it's nice to know that you can help, help one of your own, so, thank you. The next item is 4.7, and Mr. Dale, I think you're gonna talk about this one?
Yes, as we've discussed many times over the last several months, this is the, the beginning of the last step to formally create the Human Services Agency or Department. In order to do so, we have to, you have to hold a public hearing. So, what we're asking you to do to hold a public hearing in June, you have to have 30 days, so that's why we're asking you to, to suspend your rules and approve that public hearing date tonight, simply so we can get it, put it, get the public hearing notices out in time, and the public, we will discuss it at your work session in December in detail, and then you would hold your public meeting.
June.
I keep getting to send the end of the year, I keep thinking end of the year, so, excuse me, your, your June, your June work session, and then hold it on the regular meeting that night. You would be considering to abolish the current Departments of Social Services Board. You would also be creating the Consolidated Human Services Agency, consisting of the Departments of Social Services and Transportation, and, and some of the aging services that have already moved over there. And then you would also be, the board commissioners would be assuming the roles associated with governing the Human Services Board. And then we would also put on that same agenda, not part of the public hearing, but on that same agenda, we would also put on there, you formally naming the, the Human Services Director in their new role. So, what we are requesting that you do suspend your rules so that you can allow us to go ahead and get the ball rolling on that public hearing notice.
Questions or comments?
I got a couple of questions. With the abolishing the DSS Board, and I know we've talked about this a good bit, but just a couple clarifications. Once the DSS Board is dissolved, there'll be a Human Services Board, correct?
The, based on the, the next step, you as the Board of Commissioners would assume that role?
Right.
And you would have the final say-so on those issues. We would recommend soon thereafter for you to create an advisory board?
Okay.
That would act very similar to most of our other appointed advisory boards that would, that would meet monthly or quarterly with the staff, and then, and then make, advise them, and then also come back and advise the board should it, should it be necessary.
Okay, and how will it work, assuming the role, with the commission board assuming the role of the DSS Board, being the appointed liaison on that board? I know we have executive sessions from time to time. Will that be something that will be included in our duties, or how will that work?
Typically, if, if you're talking personnel in those issues, closed-session-related issues, that would come before this board.
Okay.
In their, in their capacity as the, the governing board of DSS, of Social Services or Human Services.
Okay. So, potentially we'll have, you know, added, well, I'd say, you know, we do executive session probably at least once a meeting. Well, maybe once every other month, so, just wanted to clarify who would be handling those issues.
Right. Under this scenario, this board would be handling those, those issues. When you go through this process, right now, we, we're gonna discuss it in June, but we can, just to give you an idea of what will take place, is that you create the Human Services Director. The Director would no longer answer directly to the DSS Board, they would answer to the county manager's position. They would go that route, so. Therefore, the, the decision or the ability to hire and fire would no longer be with the DSS Board of the Director's position, they would, it would be upon recommendation of the county manager to this board.
Okay.
To.
And we would ultimately, your recommendation, we had ultimately approve, or just give direction?
Give direction.
Okay.
That's correct. And the only, the other change, major change, would be currently, Social Services employees operate under the State Personnel Act, which are a little different than what our typical county employees operate under. So, through this process, all of the DSS employees would transfer out of, from underneath the State Employees Act into the, or State Personnel Act into being Cabarrus County employees, and would operate under the Cabarrus County Personnel Ordinance, just as the other 700 or so employees do.
Okay, great.
Will there be any savings to the county in making these changes?
Savings as in, while we've already realized some savings just from some of the changes we've made, there will be savings in economy of some of the departments being able, for the public to come in, they can handle their business in one location, that's one thing, which we've already started implementing. There's other options, and Mr. Rose can, can speak to those too as well, of what they've been doing internally and saving. Some people have been doing, taking on more tasks, and they've been able to, if you're, if you're coming in and asking for one service, they've been able to say, okay, you might need this service, but here's two or three other services that we can do. So, we're saving, saving staff time, we're saving public time.
Are you gonna have to hire somebody to be over this new department?
No, sir. We already have somebody that's the Director of Social Services now.
Okay.
So, that would be my recommendation.
Commissioner White or Commissioner Morris, any questions?
How many other counties are doing, are handling Department of Social Services in this matter? I'm aware of at least one.
Let me see, I got it here. This, the new legislation allows you, it used to be you had to have a minimum population to be able to do this.
Right.
And with the new legislation, that took that requirement away, and, let's see. I had a list here, and I forgot to highlight it. Ben?
It's over 20. Can I have a talk?
Yeah.
Those are considering.
Yeah.
Just to repeat, over 20 that are doing it or considering?
Considering, right. And, yes, sir.
Out of those 20, is it structured in the way ours will be that the current, the DSS Director is in charge of the Human Services Department, or do you have someone that's in charge of the Human Services umbrella and have a DSS Director?
Some, some are doing that. I think Gaston County is in the process of doing that now. They're actually bringing in the Health Department as well. We're not proposing to do that, nor, we're not allowed per the statute, but at that time, then there, there are other rules and guidelines you gotta go through. The makeup of the board has a whole different responsibility, you're actually, you're, you have to file strict guidelines as to who can actually serve on those boards, and sometimes, and if that's the case, if you have the option, you're naming a human, new Human Services Director. Some of the counties, I think, are, in fact, are looking at the Health Director, the person that's currently serving as the Health Director, may become that, and then there would be another Social Services Lead Person or Director as well, so.
However, ours is gonna be one and the same.
That is the, that is the plan.
Okay.
Now, we, again, we're not proposing to bring in the Health Alliance. Okay.
Yeah, the Health Alliance is kind of unique, so. Hey, the request before us is to suspend our rules so that we can go ahead and be able to give the 30 days' notice on this. So, if there are no other questions or comments, at this time, I'd accept a motion to suspend our rules. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now, we have before us, we need a, a motion to set a public hearing for June the 20th, 2013, for the discussion and consideration of creating a Human Services Agency and other related aspects of that agency. Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second?
Right.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That work?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Jonathan Marshall's gonna talk about NC DOT requests for purchase of construction easement at Rocky River Elementary School.
This is Farm. The Haydock to Junker, which are their stations on the rail, but it's really the, the rail improvements, basically from where Rocky River Road or Old Charlotte Road goes over the rail, and it's, it's, there are double tracks there, to continue the, the two lines or construct a second line, so you have two separate tracks running all the way to, through the Newell area of Charlotte. So, you have quite a bit of increased capacity by allowing trains to, you know, to pass each other without having to wait on side rails. The part that affects us is a temporary construction easement of less than, really, I said less than a tenth of an acre, it's actually less than a twentieth of an acre on the backside of Rocky, Rocky, Rocky River Elementary School. Again, it's not a permanent easement, it's just for construction purposes. Because it is such a small amount, the amount being offered is very small. I have got them to increase that by $100. Now, it's not a great deal, but I told them I wanted to cover our legal fees for having this reviewed, and they were nice enough to push that up. But, again, it, it's all related to the improvements that are now taking, will be taking place all the way through Harrisburg, and affecting all the public crossings as well as two private crossings.
Any questions concerning the, the easement for a whopping $275?
$375 now.
Three, oh, okay, I think it says $275. That's fine. $375. Okay, any questions? Okay. And I apologize, we do need to go back to the previous motion that we made. I gave you the wrong date. It should've.
I, I had the wrong date.
Sorry, it should've been June the 17th for the public hearing, so, I guess we need to do a different motion with that date. So, let me rephrase and go back to 4.7. I would accept a motion that we schedule a public hearing for June the 17th, 2013, for the discussion and consideration of creating a Human Services Agency and other related aspects of that agency as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 153A77A.
So moved.
So moved. And a second. Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I wanna, don't wanna add an extra meeting to June. We'll be meeting enough in May, we don't need to add extra ones in June. Thank you. The next item, NC DOT requests for design-construction agreement letter. It's also Mr. Marshall.
This is related to the Raging Ridge Road Extension and Bridge Project that we've been discussing for quite a long time. NC DOT, through Division 10, had agreed to provide $250,000 in contingency funds to this project. In addition, there were $250,000 requested in contingency funds from the General Assembly. The House portion of that, the 125, has been approved. The Senate side, we've been waiting for approval and have not received that. That's not to say it won't happen, but, but we need to move forward. So, I've been asking Division 10 staff for an agreement that would state that, that they would contribute up to $500,000, understanding that only, at this point, only 375 has been approved, and that the county would cover the remainder of the cost of this project, which is currently estimated about 1.1 million total. In order for us to move forward, that has to be approved at the Raleigh level. They want correspondence in the form of a letter, and now is my discussion this morning with the, with the division staff. They would like a resolution, which, with your agreement, I would prepare both of those for your regular meeting, requesting that, that we enter into an agreement with them for design and constru, design as well as construction oversight for this road and bridge, with the county contrib, with the state contribution up to $500,000, but not less than $375,000, and the county to cover the remaining cost of that.
I know that we've, we've talked about this for, for a really long time, it seems like, and we have the funds available.
Correct.
Commissioners?
We have the funds available for the entire project.
Right. Right. Do you have questions? If anybody has been to a football game at Hickory Ridge High School, you can raise your hand, and you can attest to the fact that you sit for quite, you either leave early or you sit. The last one I was out there for, unfortunately, went down to the wire, so nobody left early, and everybody sat for a long time. So I know that when the, the school was originally built, and now the middle school's been added, that that was a desire at that time to help with traffic flow, so.
And this is one of many bridge improvements. As you're aware, Hickory Ridge, on Hickory Ridge Road, just north of the high school, middle school, that bridge was already replaced. Going down Hickory Ridge, the bridge of, at Reedy Creek is being replaced. In between is Futa Creek. That one is scheduled for replacement in the next two years. On Stallings Road and Farm Mill Road, their bridge is scheduled for improvement. So we hope to, because this one is not, we don't want two bridges out at the same time, but because this one is an extension, we hope that by packaging and by the state overseeing it, we'll achieve some of those savings by being able to bid two at the same time.
Questions, Commissioners? Comments? Okay. I think, yeah, this is, like I said, this is one that we've talked about quite often, so it's good to see it move forward. 4.10, Transfer of Surplus Vehicle to Odell Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department. Bobby? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I know how I'm gonna do. There's a car that, Crown Vix, 132,000 miles. It's one of the old deputy's cars. It's been replaced with a new one, transitioned out. Odell Fire Department has, has requested that we donate them, donate this to them. It meets the qualifications of our surplus requirements. We are not, in the past, we've always used those for other departments, but these are the big engine gas guzzlers. We don't use those anymore, so we typically surplus them and move them on. So Odell Fire Department has requested that we surplus it and transfer the ownership to the department.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Burge, you've gotta have a question about cars. No, you usually ask about the mileage. That's the only reason why. It most definitely has some miles on there. Are there any, any other questions, or any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. That was easy for you. 4.11, Ms. Dubois, Administrative Transfer of Grant Fundings, the General Fund to a Multi-Year Special Revenue Fund, Special Projects Fund.
Yes, we have two Soil and Water Grants. The Porter Farm Grant, which was, the first phase of that was budgeted in the 460 Fund, and in anticipation of the second phase, what happened within a short period of time, it was inadvertently budgeted into the General Fund, and we'd like to transfer that over to the Multi-Year Fund, the 460 Fund, so that both phases of that project would, one, be co-located together and keep it more simplistic for accounting purposes. The other portion on the Clark Creek Grant, there was a portion that the county was matching to that grant that was budgeted in the operational budget for this Soil and Water Department, and we'd also like to make that transfer over, so that the entire cost of the grants would be co-located with each other for accounting purposes, so that we would know what we have expended on it and what we've matched on those two projects. So this is just a request to transfer these monies from one General Fund budget over to the Multi-Year Fund to keep them consistent.
Hey, questions? Okay. Do you like to have, make it so we can all tell where the money is? Next page, 4.12, Approve Use of Contingency Funds for Legal Expenses. Anne, if you'll join us, please.
It's that time of year when we're looking at our budget and seeing how things are going to come out and where, where expenses may be going over budget, and one place where we, we need some more money to cover for the year, and it was fairly significant, so I thought I needed to bring it to you. It's in our legal fees. We've had some, some higher-than-usual legal fees due to some tax appeals, due to the APFO, due to filling in for the DSS role. And so, to date, we've, we've, well, my estimates on the cost that it's gonna be is $632,000, and our amended budget is $500,000. So the budget amendment you'll see is, round figure's $135,000 in addition.
Commissioners, do you have questions? So these are projected, just based on where we are now in the budget, we've got May and June to get through, that...
Correct.
You feel like with the cases that are out there and everything that we have to do in the next two months, that this, this amount should cover it?
Well, you never know what's coming up, but I have talked to, to Mr. Cook and tried to see what, what was estimated. We had spent through 426, $482,000, but really, that would be through the beginning of March. And so I've got, no, through, yeah, through 426 would be through March. So I've got April, May, and June. So I estimated $150,000. It's running around $50,000 a month. So that's what I added to the current year actual, to get what I thought I needed. And that'll cover it if the creek don't rise, as the saying goes.
As long as we don't live up in the mountains. Yesterday, hopefully, the creek won't rise here, so. Any, any comments or questions? Okay. The next item has to do with the General Obligation Bonds Refunding Results.
Oh, yes. We are going to close on those bonds on May 15th, and so for the May 20th Board Meeting, I should have you the results of the refunding. They, they went very well, and I've got, got some round numbers, but our savings, I believe, is gross is over $6 million. Net is about $5.5 million. But I will have the exact numbers for you at the, at the May 20th Meeting after the May 15th close.
Questions or comments?
Well, you know, they varied over a period of time. The savings was 8.4, 8.3% over the...
What was the average interest rate, then, since it varies over time?
I think it'll be in the 2% range.
I thought we were looking at 1.7%.
Well, you know, from one time to another, it changed somewhat. I'll get that for you, though, the exact amount. They structured the various coupons a different period of time. I know the premium was over $10 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And thank you very much. Next, Kevin and Kyle Belfer are here to talk about the Construction and Demolition Landfill and our Public-Privet Compost Operation Proposal.
Good evening. Last month, we discussed the proposed Public-Privet Compost Operation at our Construction-Demolition Landfill. And this evening, we wanted to present an MOU between Cabarrus County and Agromatters. This MOU establishes some parameters for a stat, for an agreement to operate a compost facility at the landfill, and to begin the process of lease signing, obtaining appropriate operating permits through North Carolina Deener, and also working with Concord and Kannapolis to obtain yard waste and, and also to do site preparation at the landfill property. We'd like to kinda, the, the idea of this is to kinda expedite the matters so that we could operate and open a compost facility late this year. Megan, if you wanna switch to the aerial real quick? This is what the proposed operation would look like. It's actually like, I think we spoke last month, that is due south of our current CND landfill cell. We've got about 15 acres of land that's gonna be difficult to expand and continue CND operations on, and we thought would be a very good site to do a compost operation there. And as you can see, that's kinda what it'd look like. The neat thing is that people could bring CND or yard waste or food waste, and they'd come into the scale house. We'd have our scale house attendant appropriately code what the type of waste is and direct that person to the appropriate area, whether it be the CND landfill site or the compost site. And then we would just make sure that we reconcile the appropriate waste and who it goes to, and make sure that it's invoiced appropriately. If, and the plan right now is to start as a large Type 1 compost facility. As we mentioned as well last month, a Type 1 compost facility just handles yard waste and grinds it down and then compost it. The purpose of that would be to assist Kannapolis and Concord bringing yard waste to our facility in a short matter. Also, it is much easier to obtain a Type 1 compost permit from Deener than it would be Type 3. The other thing with Type 1 is that we can establish our infrastructure a little more easily, make sure that we streamline the process as we move to Type 3. So I think, as we mentioned last month, we, we gotta make sure we're on our game with Type 3 compost, bringing in food waste and such, that we don't create issues such as odor. So I think that would be the, the best route to go. Looking at the MOU terms and the actual terms of our proposed operation between us and Agromatters, we were proposing a lease term of nine years, in which we'd receive $200 a month. The county would provide exist, the existing landfill scales and scale house operator and office to accommodate the proposed facility, as well as providing access roads to the proposed compost area. Agromatters will be responsible for all our operations, all equipment and labor to perform the compost operations. Agromatters will pay all costs associated with the compost operations, including construction, equipment, monitoring, stormwater compliance, and sampling for that stormwater. Agromatters and county staff will jointly agree on acceptable waste and eliminate any incoming waste that is found to contribute to unacceptable odors. Agromatters will pay the county $1 per ton for all incoming public food waste, and $2 a ton for all incoming commercial food waste. And Agromatters will also supply the county with 5% of the total compost produced at the site, or a minimum of 1,500 cubic yards at no cost to the county. Agromatters will also agree to the county's indemnification and liability insurance requirements, and this agreement will only be executed if Deener approves the permit application and both the cities of Concord and Kannapolis agree to send yard waste to their facility. And those terms are currently being worked on between Agromatters and the City of Concord and Kannapolis. There's been verbal discussion and agreement, but nothing official has been signed at this time. So based on, if we look at, as an example, if we look at a yearly output of about 29,000 cubic yards of compost produced, the revenue to the county would be approximately $25,000. Annual savings to the county would be approximately $46,000, and that would consist of grinding savings that we currently have to do on an annual basis. That means all the yard trash that people bring up to our Construction-Demolition Landfill. We have to grind that down on an annual basis to prepare that for our small Type 1 compost operation, and we budget approximately $30,000 a year for that operation. Plus, our annual compost purchases for grounds maintenance comes out to an average of about $16,000 a year, so that's where those savings come from. So if you look over a nine-year period of this agreement, it would be a revenue-slash-savings of approximately $413,000 for the county. Some, all the benefits that we think going forward with this compost operation would be educational opportunities for our local schools within the county. Agromatters has agreed and is very excited about introducing students to the compost process, and starting to get people comfortable with that process. Another potential benefit, excuse me, is the potential diversion of CND waste from our landfill and put into the compost operation. An example is any wood waste that happens to make it into our landfill. We could divert that and move it, and hopefully save some space there. If a portion, if our CND, like we've talked about last month as well, that we've got limited airspace at the landfill, including our current expansion that we're looking to proceed with, once this closes up, and if it closes up, having a compost facility out there as well will help generate revenue that we could pay for having a scale house attendant out there. Cause plans were, even if we shut down the CND landfill, we'd like to continue to have an expanded recycling center out there, which we receive your, your normal bottles and cans and paper, but we also collect scrap tires and white goods. And we also receive municipal solid waste from residents as well. So you still need a scale house attendant to receive those customers, and having this operation out there would kind of offset the cost of that labor. With regards to any risk or exposure to the county, as I mentioned earlier, operating environmental permits will be under Agromatters' name. We also recently had a meeting with the County Risk Manager and Agromatters concerning liability insurance. We presented what we felt we needed, and we've worked with Agromatters Insurance Company, and we have received a Certificate of Liability Insurance that meets the needs for the counties at this time. Another thing to, to realize with composting, that it's a natural process. We're not introducing any chemicals or anything like that at the site. So the potential of having something bad or contaminating the land is very remote at this point, because, as I mentioned, it is a natural process. As I mentioned, with the scale house attendant as well, not an extra burden to the county or an extra cost, because that person is there Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00, and then on Saturdays from 8:00 to 2:00 anyway. So that person's there regardless of whether we have this compost operation or not. So we, so we feel that the, the risk or exposure to the county for this, this process is, is limited. Any questions? Also, I do have Ron Gilkerson behind me with Agromatters. If you do have any questions concerning the operation or any questions on his side.
All right. And thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Commissioners, are there any questions for either staff or Mr. Gilkerson? Yes, sir?
In the agreement, it mentions that the county provide the existing scales, the scale house operator, which you had talked about, and it also says office space. Is there currently office space there for them to use, or will that have to be constructed or brought in?
There's, there's existing office space. I split time up there when I'm up at the landfill, looking, looking to see how things are going, and occasionally just up there for, for just support. But I'm only up there maybe half the time or whatever, so we do have plenty of office.
Okay.
Time up there that we can split time with.
Right, no additional cost.
Correct. Yes.
All right. And then you had mentioned roads. Will the county be assuming the cost on that for construction of roads to the site?
The only thing, they would be using the existing roads, and they would be for any additional access roads to the compost site. Agromatters will be paying for that construction cost.
Okay. And they will be providing their own equipment, maintenance for that equipment?
That, that is correct. If you look at that site, and it's basically gonna be their site. There's gonna be no county employees over there. I mean, hopefully, there's gonna be some, some cooperation amongst, amongst the two groups, but it's gonna be their operation. It's their equipment, it's gonna be their facility, just everything. We're, I mean, basically, we could go away and they could operate it, or they will be operating it.
All right.
Other questions?
What is the, if you go from the green to the left, about what's the buffer to the next homeowner or the next residential, not property, but resident, residence?
If you look to the left, it's, it's several hundred feet, because the homes are further to the west. It don't, it's, I'm approximating over 1,000 feet. The buffers that we have there are all within what North Carolina Deener mandates that we have, and is also stricter than our current zoning requirements. But in that immediate property, there is a tremendous amount of wooded buffer between our site and then actual residence.
And the sites that we're talking about are buffered from all residences very well?
I believe so. I think this is an ideal location, because if you look at our current cell to the north, you're looking at an elevation of 800 feet. You're looking at, to the immediate right where the words are at, all the labeling, that's a closed municipal solid waste cell. Once again, with elevation of 800 feet, and then the... once again with elevation of 800 feet, and then the tan, I can better read, the closed CND landfill cell, that's also got an elevation of 800 feet, so it's almost like an amphitheater effect surrounding it. And then we've got some nice woods to the west that we really think is an ideal location to minimize any odors from really escaping that area.
Well, also visibility.
You will not see, definitely, I mean, Irish Potato Road's your main road, so nobody will see that operation at all, which is another advantage that we think will be very well for us.
How much public food waste and commercial food waste are you anticipating receiving?
The current plan would be commercial waste and public waste, both, about 7,500 tons a year is what we're anticipating, and that's kind of...
7,500 tons each?
Each, correct.
So a total of 15,000 tons?
That is correct.
How much does that compost down to?
We're anticipating, between that and the yard debris that we're receiving, we're hoping to get about 25,000 tons of yard debris a year, which would equate to about 29,000 cubic yards of compost per year.
So in breaking it down, it increases in size?
Well, you're going from tons of cubic yards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have the conversion factor in front of me, but it's different.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Kevin, from the stockpile to our property line, how far is that?
It's going to be at least 100 feet buffer, I believe. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
Yes.
The buffer that you see there on...
You need to come up to this microphone here.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Ron Gilkerson, Agromatters. To answer your question, the westernmost buffer there along the westernmost tree line is 100 feet by DNR requirement. The stockpiles that you see there in green are going to be located interior to that site by approximately another 100 feet, so we're looking at 200 feet from the property line closest to the western boundary.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that. We have 200 feet on our side. There are a lot of trees on the adjacent property, but for whatever reason, development may occur, so even if it did occur, there would still be a 200-foot separation on our side of the property line from all of this activity.
Now, just to clarify too, the windrow operation, which is everything that you see, that the elongated green rows are just windrows of yard waste material that are typically windrowed for aeration purposes, we can take those windrows up to 100 feet of the property line by DNR standards. It just so happens that the processing end of this operation will be interior to that line, again, by 100 feet, because we want to keep the interior processing, both screening and grinding, further interior to the site, so we'll maintain another 100 feet. So just to clarify, so we can windrow within up to 100 feet of the property line.
The anticipation of 7,500 tons of food waste per year, where will that come from?
Well, several places. If we look at the commercial side of things, there are a lot of zero-waste initiatives that are ongoing currently, like all your big boxes, Walmarts, Targets, Sam's, for instance. They have mandates within their corporate entities that say that if there is a food waste composting operation within so many miles of one of their boxes, then they will use those operations for composting or for recycling. So there's already things going on that are going to be driving, you know, food waste, diverted food waste items to operations like this. We're kind of on the forefront of things, and I think that you'll even get DNR to kind of ring in and say, at some point in time, will there be a mandate to divert food waste from MSW facilities? We think so. What the timeline of that is, we don't know. Are the big waste companies like Waste Management and Republic Waste, the big operators of landfills, looking for ways to divert food waste? Because it's not only the right thing to do, but it also assists them environmentally in their landfills, yes. So I guess that's a long way to answer the question, but as well, we're hopeful of, Agromatters is hopeful of, Cabarrus County getting on board with some public-owned facilities eventually by looking at some diversion of at least pre-consumer food waste items to this operation.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Susie Morris is here for the next item from Planning and Development, Boston Fisher Road Rightaway Abandonment.
Lee Snuggs with Plan Development. I've been, I'm the E-911 addressing coordinator. The board expressed support for resolution to close or abandon rightaway for about the last 10th of a mile of Boston Fisher Road. That was requested by Robert Hollifield, the property owner at the very end. He owns all the property at the very end of Boston Fisher. That resolution was sent to NCDOT, and they approved it, and it's back to us. At this point, we will need to hold a public hearing and request that that be placed on new business, and there should be a map and everything attached if you need more details. The public has been identified with signage on Boston Fisher, and all the property owners have been alerted as well. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. And the next one, text amendments.
Good evening. You have two different text amendments that actually have four different components in front of you this evening. The first one is to amend Chapter 7, which is our permitted based on standards chapter. It is to add a clarification that you can only have one dwelling unit per parcel in any district where the dwelling unit is allowed, and it also corrects a couple of typos. We have operated under an interpretation that only one dwelling unit was allowed per parcel. This simply codifies that particular interpretation. The second part of that is to amend Chapter 8, number 21, which is reception facilities, and this proposed language addresses access for these types of facilities. Right now, it says that they have to be located off of a major or minor thoroughfare that really is not realistic in the county because we do have a lot of privately maintained roads, so it addresses the fact that they could use a privately maintained road if they have the proper paperwork from whoever owns that road, whether it's a homeowner's association, a couple of people, or one person, but whoever maintains that road so that their traffic is not going to in any way be destructive for that road, and if it is, that there would be something in place that they would have to fix that road. And we will need to hold a public hearing on this, and the two for the zoning ordinance are together as text amendment 2013-00001. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
How are you defining one accessory dwelling unit?
We do have a definition for an accessory dwelling unit in our ordinance. It talks about it being a residence that is subordinate to the primary residence, so that is covered as far as the definition.
So the way it seems, the way it's being proposed, is you can have your primary residence, and then you can have an apartment over your garage for extended, whomever. That would be acceptable?
That's correct. It's already in the ordinance. We just have never clarified that you can only have one per property.
Now, is it one, under one roof, is that one? Or is it if you have the two floors, the accessible by stairs, the second floor is accessible by stairs, is that two, or is that one if it's since it's under one roof?
It's not under one roof. It's a detached unit.
Understand.
So there would be like a mother-in-law suite, so it's just one allowed per parcel.
I may not have been clear. You got your primary residence, and you've got a detached area. If the detached area is two floors, that is separate, is that considered, although it's under one roof, is that one unit, or is that two units?
The number of floors would not matter. It would be based on the square footage. There's a calculation that we have to look at based on what the primary livable, habitable area is of the primary dwelling, and then they're allowed up to either 50% of the primary dwelling or 1,100 square feet. So we wouldn't, you know, the entire building can only be the 1,100 square feet, which is the maximum. So if there was a garage, that would be counted towards that overall maximum of 1,100 square feet.
Are we having a problem with multiple or a larger area off-site or adjacent from a residential home?
We're not. In a discussion that I had with a citizen, they were asking me questions, and were saying that nowhere in our ordinance did it say that it was only one, and, you know, I was trying to explain that this is the interpretation that we have operated under, so it's simply to clarify that you are only allowed one per parcel.
Well, you know, I'm just thinking, I don't know if there's many opportunities, but there may be, if you have a two-floor unit, mother-in-law lives on the first floor, and kids are living on the second floor, you're not, that's not acceptable under our ordinances.
We don't regulate who lives there?
I know you don't regulate who lives there, but if that was the situation, either by size of the unit, or the size of the unit would dictate that...
That is correct, what you're saying.
Yeah.
Allow for one additional unit.
Yeah. And kitchen. But it has to be half the size of your existing home.
You can have one, a half a size, up to 1,100 square feet. So if you've got a 5,000-square-foot house, you can still only have an 1,100-foot mother-in-law.
I think that's just living area too, isn't it?
Right, it's just based on the living area of the primary dwelling.
Right.
But you...
I kind of have an issue with that as well. Is there, is it based on, say you have a 200-acre property, and your house is 5,000 square feet, and you want a guest house, is it, you're limited to ones, even though you have 200 acres, you're limited to only 1,100 square feet?
I'll let you answer that, Susie, but I can try.
Yes, because then at that point, you would start getting into a multifamily situation. So this allows you to have the one additional dwelling unit on your parcel, but anything past that, you're now talking about potential for, you know, an actual, somebody could be running, say, a bed and breakfast that had cabins or something like that. So we allow for one, hopefully to be used for, you know, child that's graduated college or maybe a sick parent, something like that, but we only have historically, only have permitted the one, so we were just trying to codify that in the ordinance.
So what if it's a guest house where someone's not permanently living, and is that considered a dwelling unit?
Yes, that would be, a guest house would qualify as a dwelling unit. You would be allowed up to the 1,100 square feet.
I guess, I understand what you're saying, you know, concern of somebody running a bed and breakfast with cabins, or, I guess it's a gray area, but...
I mean, you could...
In practice, what you see people do is they divide that under several law.
Right.
So you'll see, when we have private roads, you'll see people when they want to, if they have 200 acres, they'll divide out an acre for that purpose, whether it's their children or parents or whatever, so it actually becomes a primary residence on that lot.
Okay.
So how difficult is it to do that, and how expensive? If you've got 10 acres, and you want to put one of them, one mother-in-law on that corner and one on the other, then you got to subdivide your property in order to do that, right?
Or move.
It's actually, yeah. It's actually a very, it's a fairly simple process. It's done by deed detachments. You'd have a surveyor who would survey out that lot, but it's then done to a very simplified deed detachment and approval process that goes through the planning staff.
You're only allowed one primary dwelling unit per parcel, period, unless you're a bona fide farm. So this allows you to have the one smaller dwelling unit with your primary unit that you're allowed to have, but we do not allow two primary residences on the same parcel.
And your lot could be one acre, or it could be 500 acres.
Right.
As long as it's a deeded lot, you get one.
Where does the square footage requirement come in? What's the purpose of that?
So that it is actually subordinate to whatever the primary residence is, and then also it gives a range, in working with the tax department when we did these amendments several years ago, that was an average of what most, that was an average to where a typical accessory dwelling unit size.
It seems like it could just be 50% and not a cap of 1,100 square feet.
And it could be, if the Board of Commissioners wanted it to be, but our current text is 50% of the current, of the livable space, and then, or up to the 1,100, so that it, we don't have huge accessory structures next to huge mansions.
Yeah, but if it's 50%, you've got a 10,000-square-foot house, and then 1, 50% of that, I mean...
That's correct, but we also...
I guess we don't run into that issue very much, but...
Yeah, but what's a very... Quick issue that can come into play is if you have a sick family member and then a child that just graduates. What do you do there? If you have, if you're, it's easy enough to talk about deeding property off, but when you start deeding property off to a sick family member, then it goes into their estate, and then it has to be probated, and how do you get it back into your, you know, that, so that...
Well, I can own more than one piece of property. Could I not?
But if you're deeding it off, and you're giving it, if you're giving it to that other person...
But if I divide it, and I own two properties and two homes?
You can own, you can own it, you can.
Then you do what you want.
But I can let whoever I want to live in it.
And one of the things too that we have to take into consideration is, you know, we do have structural coverages and impervious coverage thresholds for both of those, so all of that comes into play with not only the size of the accessory structure, but then you have to look at impervious coverage and structural coverage as well, because you're only allowed a certain percent for that parcel.
And setbacks.
Yeah, just remember, all the regulations that are in place were reviewed by a planning board, might be 20 years ago, way back, and approved by a governing board back then, so they're only, they're in place because they were approved by a previous board. If you don't like something, if you want the planning board to look at something, you know, times have changed, if you want them to look at something and come back with some other recommendations, we can always do that, not just this, but any of our zoning regulations or planning.
And that was one of our, I'm sorry, that was one of our recent changes to Chapter 7, was to put the 50% in there because before it only allowed up to 900 square feet, so we did up the number of, the amount of square footage that's allowed.
Guess I'm trying to figure out, not mind, what we're trying to protect ourselves from.
Irresponsible people.
I don't think you can do that.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying...
Well, if you don't want to have a primary structure and then four-unit, you know, a four-unit apartment building put right behind the primary house.
Or you don't want to have four mobile homes behind your home.
Or, there you go. I didn't even think about that, but something like that, I mean...
Can you stack them?
No, and you're not allowed to use a mobile home.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, Dennis Testerman's back with us. I'm sorry, Dennis.
Madam Chair, I have another amendment.
Do you have another one? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. The next amendment, amendments are amendments to the subdivision ordinance. The first is an amendment to Section 11, which is public and private roads. This language codifies when existing 45-foot rightaways may be used for access and clarifies that private roads must be built to the public standard. So if someone has property that is landlocked where a 45-foot rightaway already exists, we would allow them to utilize that rightaway. If it is a new 45-foot rightaway, they can only have five lots off of that rightaway. The second part of this amendment is an amendment to Section 5, which is the final plat requirements. We did have someone that questioned us using a regular, I say regular, a final plat certificate that included some additional items that you may not see on an exemption plat, so we worked with our attorney to come up with appropriate language, and that is the language that we are incorporating into the ordinance as an optional... that we are incorporating into the ordinance as an optional certificate for people who are submitting an exception plat, and what that means is that there are some state statutes that govern some things that happen as far as subdivisions and dividing properties. This certificate could be used on those particular subdivisions if they were not comfortable with the standard certificate, and I don't know if our attorney has anything else to add to that part.
Well, the way the statute is written that defines the word subdivision, if you subdivide your property into tracts of 10 acres or larger, it's not considered a subdivision by definition. So it was really to address that situation, which actually came up in a certain circumstance. I think Commissioner White may remember that. There were some emails that went back and forth about that, so we were trying to address that situation where it technically, we consider it a subdivision of land, because in, at least in a lay sense or practical sense, that you are subdividing your land, but under the state statute, if it's into 10-acre-plus tracts, it's not considered a subdivision by law.
And then there are also just some typos that we're cleaning up as part of this in those certificates as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now Dennis Testerman. Approval of an amendment to the North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund contract.
The agenda item didn't actually spell out the location on this, but this is at Coxmell Elementary School. The ongoing restoration work that we're doing there in conjunction with the significant natural heritage area that's on that site. The contract is nearing completion. We have primarily some plantings that need to be done in a wetland that was constructed as part of that project. There are some other, there's another amendment that is necessary. This basically helps us go ahead and get this contract closed out. They're actually relaxing some of the requirements that had initially been part of the project, and will just help us get closure on this one, I think, a little bit earlier than would have been the case otherwise. And there's, I guess the key point is that there's no additional money involved in this one.
Okay. Are there any questions? I noticed that the matching funds total amount, it's been moving around a good little bit, but the total amount is lower. It's on page 109. I don't know if that impacts the county, if the county's saving any on that, or if it's some of the other entities.
I think at the end of the day, we had some things that crept up during the course of the project that were unexpected, that we had to cover from various and sundry places, and it looks like now we're gonna be able to get reimbursed on some of that one way or the other. We had some, part of what's making this work is that we, when Philip Morris was still in the county, they, as I recall, actually sought us out, invited us to submit a grant, which we did, and they gave us $35,000, and the way this grant was set up, that was part of the match that went into it, and the state's given us more flexibility on what we can use that money for.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, so this'll end, this is gonna finish up this project, is that right?
We got, I'm looking for the, we had a meeting as recently as Friday with a conference room full of people trying to sort through all the complexity of this. What are you thinking of?
There's actually two amendments in place here, four and five.
They both do the same, well, generally the same thing. They're reducing our match requirements and moving money around within the grant, so just wanted to make sure that you understood that there is Amendment Four and Five. Five came into us Friday, and we decided to go ahead and add it to the agenda rather than discuss this again next month, when it's pretty much the same topic and same discussion, so we added it last minute on Friday, so that's all I wanted to add, to make sure you understood that there were two on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
It looks like that is, isn't, we got a version as late as about 1:00 or 2:00 today, that had revisions that our engineer made and the state approved, so we will have, certainly have that in front of you. If that's not it, I think that might be it, but if not, we will have that in front of you for the May meeting, the actual...
Very good.
Okay. Yes, okay, so we'll make sure that you have the correct and final, if that is not it.
Thank you. Next we have is, we need to look at our regular meeting agenda. Commissioners, if you will take a moment to look at that, specifically look at the consent agenda. Commissioner Burridge mentioned that G8, he would like to be moved to F11. Well, let's look at, look at what's on the consent agenda first. As long as everything on the consent agenda is fine. To stay there, is there anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull off?
No. I would suggest moving G5, G7, and G8 to F11, 12, 13.
Okay.
If that's suitable.
So, G5 is the stream restoration project on Back Creek?
Which I know we were gonna receive some information that wasn't in our packet for that, but assuming that we get that before and everyone's okay with it, oh, yes.
It's in, yeah, it's in there now.
Okay. Okay, and then seven is the MPO Memorandum of Understanding is another one I was gonna also suggest we move, and then eight is, was table from April, the Second Amendment, so...
Is G2 gonna be moved to June 17?
Is G2 gonna be moved to June 17?
Yes. The only other thing I see is that there's nothing regarding the airport, but I guess we're still waiting on that. Eric, if you're gonna, you said you may have someone come to our...
Yeah, we'll try to get somebody there for that meeting as well. If it's okay with you, we'll add it to new business.
Can you give Jerry one?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna move, G5 will become F11, G7 will become F12, G8 will become F13, G2 will be moved to the June 17 meeting.
G6 is...
G6 is the general obligation bonds?
That's just reporting exactly like they did tonight.
Okay, do you want to move that, the GO bonds, put that under consent?
We weren't quite sure if you wanted to have, announce that at the public...
I would rather have it announced to the public to know what our savings are.
And there will be a budget amendment with that at that time.
Okay, so we'll have a budget amendment, so we'll leave that one there.
That'll be four, is what I count.
Yes, we would just renumber 1, 2, 3, and 4 into new business.
Yeah, 1, 3, 4, and 6 will be...
1, 2, 3, 4.
We'll change the order. The budget presentation will go after the two public hearings, but, so we'll get those at 6:30 as close as possible, and then we'll do that. Just a reminder, as far as the budget presentation, I will present the budget message, and we will hand you the document, and then we will start the discussion on the budget at the budget workshops. That's the way we've done it in the past, unless you want to do something different.
I think we'll need some time to look over it.
Right.
It's not a nice, small document, but we can peruse easily in our spare time. Okay, so this time, I accept a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as we have discussed. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this time I accept a motion that we adjourn. Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much, and good night to our viewing audience.